Hello, everyone. We apologize for the late start, but however, we're all here with our happy and smiley faces, and everyone's safe through this, through all this weather and traffic. So, welcome to the Town of Blatensburg Council Work Session. So, this meeting is being called to order today, March 11th, 2024, at 5:40 PM. First, I would like to take care of some housekeeping. I, Councilmember Brown, am acting Mayor Protem in absence of Mayor Tekeisha James. Mayor Tekeisha James has requested to be excused from the council work session and the council meeting due to some related matters. So, I would like to call for the vote, motion to approve the request to excuse Mayor Tekeisha James from council work session and council, and council meeting due to work-related matters.
I so move.
Moved by Councilmember Blunt.
Second.
Excuse me. Seconded by Councilmember Dixon. Any extensions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Then the motion has been passed. Now, next on our agenda, approval of, next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. So, now I'll call for the vote.
I so move.
Moved by Councilmember Blunt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Dixon. Any discussion or extensions? Hearing none. That, I'm hearing none. All that's, all in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. The motion has been passed. Appearances, none. Next, we have old business. So FY 2025 budget update. So, the staff will, will provide an update on the budget calendar for FY 2025. Yay. This is the fun stuff.
Good evening, council and everybody watching. We talked about the budget calendar last time, but I will flash that up here again, just as a reminder. But before I do that, I want to get into just some of the challenges that we're going to be talking about for the upcoming budget cycle. One of these things is, and this should be in your bonders, do you see it in your bonders?
It's in there. No, Vito put it in.
Yeah.
It's, I think it's in the middle. I think it's in your, it's part of your report.
Uh, no. It's, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that one. Yeah, those tabs kind of stick when the paper's graphic. Make sure if it's in there, if not, I'll print one up real quick. You sure?
Yeah.
I mean, I can print one at the same time and, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, one second. Okay, so, just talk about some of the challenges. Challenges, I should also say opportunities as well, because it won't make it all sound like doom and gloom or bad, it went, it's not really that way at all, just, just some things I'd like to kind of point out. This is the largest part of our FY 25 budget, or the largest part of the budget every year is the salary and compensation cost. This, for next year, I'm sorry, for this year, it's about 56%. If you back out, like, the extraneous items, I like to say, like, your big capital items, like the ARPA funding and everything like that, it gets over to like two-thirds of the total budget, the salary and compensation piece. And I always say that the Town of Blatensburg is a service industry. You know, we are providing a service. It's primarily public safety and public works, and a small percentage of the admin and support staff that support all of that. And, of course, the mayor and council, as well as the over, you know, oversight of everything. So, you can see this graph on here, the pay and benefits, you can see the administrative and council part there. It's just under $1 million. Public safety is just over $5 million, and public works is just almost $600,000. Okay? So, you can see the, the largest percentages there are public safety and public works. Now, administration, council, looks like it's substantial, but that's really the mayor and council, town administrator, town clerk, and finance combined. It's four departments combined. Instead of breaking those out, just kind of group them together, because those are your general and administrative costs. But when I, one of focus on here is 742,000, or 11% of the compensation budget is being funded by ARPA. ARPA funded some of the COLAs this year. It offset some of the compensation costs. And after next year, really, there might not be anything left to put into next year. We're going to have to find money to replace that. So, and, but, don't stop on that right yet. I'll get into, like, you know, where the, there's other places this can come from as well. But I just wanted you to see about 11% of it, yes.
Excuse Mr. Vito, yeah, because I was going to ask, can you define that, find the places?
Well, other places are going up, but there is going to be a, you know, I haven't had the budget completed yet. I'm doing all the separate parts right now, and they're just slowly starting to come together and everything. So, this is just kind of like an overview, kind of like, you know, we'll get to where we're going to find it.
Right.
Mostly next month, as it, like, all these pieces start falling in place, but I'll get to it here on the, actually, let's just jump down real quick. I'm sorry, let me make the screen smaller. We do have some new revenues, and, and this is on the very back page of your presentation. Skip to the back page. The assessments, the total assessed property in town this year is $564 million. For FY 25, the increase over 6% to $600 million. So, that generated additional $265,000 at our current tax rate. So, that's, that is actually the largest assessment increase I've seen in 10, 11 years here. So, I mean, I've only been here nine years, but it's the largest assessment increase I've seen since going back, so.
But then, but then with that, sorry to interrupt, but then with that, it goes, goes back, so it's, we get the assessment increase, but then it goes back into salaries, so it, like, goes away, and so.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. I mean, everything just kind of like pours into the general fund right now. So, and you can see, at our current tax rate, it increases to $265,000. And some places, you know, that, there have been questions of, you know, what would an additional penny of a tax increase would look like, you know, if that ever came up, or like a penny decrease. So, any penny change in our tax is a $60,000 swing. So, if we decrease our taxes, revenues go down 60,000. If we increase it for every penny, it goes up by $60,000. Just to put that, put that out there, because everybody always asks, you know, what's a penny worth, you know, how much more, you know, will it take to do this, or what happens if we cut taxes to this? So, just to give you a broad overview. The business, personal property tax assessments, those are more difficult to gauge, because it's really a self-reporting for companies to put that information out there in order for us to do the assessment. I'm sorry, in order for the state to do the assessment, meaning that with your real property taxes, with real estate, the state assesses one-third of all the properties every year. So, every three years, your property is going to be assessed. Okay? So, that's for real property. Business personal property, what that's based on is what businesses file, what their net worth, their net property, their net business property, meaning furnitures, furniture, fixture, and equipment, furniture fixtures, inventory, and equipment that they report to the state every year. So, and some of that's a timing difference, because businesses don't always file on time. There's not like a strict penalty with the State Department of Assessments and Taxations and filing the business personal property tax return. So, it fluctuates. But it's, it's been running between about, between 40 and 60 million dollars a year of business personal property assessed and reported in the town. So, based on that, we're hoping for another positive year, and we're also hoping for an increase in the income tax remitted back to us from the state of Maryland, because we're hoping for, because of the better economy, a better jobs report, you expect the higher income tax earnings, and that is collected by the state of Maryland and then divvied out to the counties and municipalities. So, that is a potential increase. The largest potential increase is the automated traffic enforcement for our red light cameras. Now, as these come online, Chief is confident that we will have the same amount of revenues that our speed cameras have, which is substantial, which we budgeted about $1.2 million annually, just on the speed cameras. But they haven't come online yet, so we don't have, you know, of course, we don't have any historical information. Chief has a lot more experience with this, but it's just, you know, as far as for me, conservatively, I just don't know, you know, how it's going to play out. But, I mean, but, you know, again, you know, on 450, we always heard there's 50,000 cars a day that travel that road, and they also have the, the high-traffic areas of 57th Avenue. Help me out, y'all. What else? Edmiston?
Kenon Worth.
Kenon Worth, thank you, thank you. So, and, you know, as long as there's traffic lights and speed limits, I think people are going to push the limits, so it's, but that is some of the additional revenues. If we flip back a little bit, let's just go back to, so, we talked about the pay and COLAs and merits, we've done this every year with the council in the budget, but, you know, I just want to go ahead and present it. You know, this is, just to show you where the CPI is, and this is also helpful when we do the budget, because we base our increases for pretty much everything from utilities to supplies, any hard purchases to CPI. And the CPI for, for this area is 3.6%. And it's, it varies when you look at the northeast region, it's lower, it's like 2.3%. Southeast is a little bit higher, and this is through January 2024, looking back against January 2023. The March figures aren't out yet, so. Okay. Can you show them where that is? Okay. Any questions on that? Does that make sense where I get that from? I'm sorry.
Thank you. Did you say southeast is a little bit higher?
I think it was. I gotta, I gotta pull the information up. I just pretty much tracked the northeast corridor. I was trying to find, like, the higher outliers, but really, we're in the, we're in the DC metro Arlington area. The next closest one would be to Towson, what's that? Here, I'll print our one out.
Is there a reason why southeast is higher?
What's that?
Is there a reason why it's higher?
Here?
The southeast. The southeast.
Oh, because of the, because every regional, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Every region will fluctuate, best based on their local economy, and they cost more to deliver something like a, for fuel, things like that, have an effect on your CPI. So, there are factors, let's say the western might be a little bit higher, because they may have different factors. So, because of, because of the Atlantic being, you know, the location where it is, that's why, so for region to region, that's why they, they split it up, because of the regional differences.
Thank you.
And I could try to pull up what goes behind that, but like, what goes behind that is your energy price, your average energy prices, housing, groceries, utilities, they factor in everything. What I've seen is this area has always been historically higher than Philadelphia area or Baltimore-Towson area, and it's always a little bit more than, than the total northeast, which surprises me, because in total northeast, you have extremely large markets, so, but I just think it's, everybody wants to be in this area, so of course, it's going to drive the prices up too. And again, with staffing being our largest budget, our largest piece of the budget, because again, the staff provided services, I just wanted to show you what, what some effects on the budget would be. If the COLA was at 3.6, and that was built into increases, that would be an additional $200,000. Every point of merit is roughly 60,000, is roughly, is $59,000, and that's a typo there. 2% merit should be 118, not 108, so, but anyway, just to round off, like, every point of merit would be additional $60,000. We expect some increases with the health insurances for the normal increases, and also maybe for enrollments. Sometimes health insurance does go down, because people, yeah, I know, I've seen it before, and it surprised me, because of, because of enrollments, because, because somebody got spousal coverage through their other job, and they come off of our insurance. Or when we budget for a family plan for new individual, and they come on as a single plan. So, sometimes those increases that you see until rates fall off because of how folks are enrolled here. And workers' comp, I don't know what this is going to be yet, unfortunately, until May, but I'm expecting a $60,000 increase. It all depends on our loss runs this year, which I do have, but I'm not going to know what that is going to be yet. We've, we've had quite a few claims over the last few years, and because of that, we are a higher risk, but it might not be this high. It might only be $20,000. I just don't know this yet. I just put in the, the very high end of it right now. So, that's all I really have for the budget highlights, or the budget, what we have to overcome, I guess, so. And of course, there's other pieces to it, so we'll bring you a complete package next month, as we start pulling all this together. And again, that complete package that, that we're going to bring to you is what I call a conversation starter. It's not anything set in stone, it's just to get the conversation going, so, you know, it's, it's not like, you know, a final draft or anything. Just so the public knows as well, it's something for us to, you know, to start the discussion, to see where, you know, we want, take the budget with FY 25.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vito. And Vito, I know that you're very excited.
It's stressful.
But we really do, really, really do thank you for the, for the hard work that you're doing, that you put into this, and the, and the reports and that you, that you passed, because I think the way that you explain things makes it, like, really easy for our residents to understand the way that you lay it out, and then how it's simplified. So, we thank and appreciate that.
I mean, I've seen other places, you know, just put it out there, and then they just shelved it, and just, just talked about it, like, bits and pieces, and like, no one knows what you're talking about, you know? You gotta put it out there so people understand, you know? So, it's, but everybody does it different, everybody puts their own flavor on it, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, but we definitely appreciate it. Thank you so very much for your update. And, and like I said, and the calendar, the calendar is, is going to be posted, or is it, is it posted already, probably?
Um, I believe it is.
Okay, yes. So, that's one of the things we do, we definitely encourage the residents to go to the website, check the dates, and that, we used to post it outside on the board. Do we still post it outside of the board?
We will post it again outside on the board. We also are putting it in the newsletter, Councilwoman, so it's also, it's going to be part of the newsletter.
It's going to be part of the newsletter, yes. So, we definitely encourage you all to join the conversation and come in and participate.
I can put it up on screen if you want, or if not.
Oh, go ahead, you can put it up on screen, mhm.
There we go.
If you don't mind, just listing.
Yeah, if I can do it, one sec.
The dates.
Yeah. Let me make sure I share the right thing.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, if you look up on screen here, I don't think, I don't think this is in your packets, but we are in March right now, okay? So, at the April 8th meeting, we're going to introduce the budget. It's actually the town administration's budget that's going to be introduced, and then, you know, the mayor and councils are going to discuss it. At the 15th and 22nd work sessions, that should be 22 there, not 25, but you see on the calendar over here, so on, on the two Mondays following the council meeting, we're going to talk about the budget. On the 8th, we're going to go through the revenues, and probably the administrative departments, and on the 22nd, we'll go through public safety and public works and the ARPA budget. And then we meet again on the 13th for the mayor and council meeting, and of course, you know, work session, we can talk about the budget again, because that's what, you know, we do during the work sessions. And then, again, on the 20th, if needed, is work session number three. Now, what's going to play in, okay, so, what changed this year is we don't have a constant yield hearing on here, because the Maryland law changed that if you're keeping your current tax rate, you don't have to go through the whole constant yield process. And Councilmember Dixon, that's a long process that, that we have to go through every year to do a separate hearing for it, but good part about it is we don't have to do it again, so, or have to do it if, if we keep the current tax rate. Now, if the tax rate is going to change, we will have to go through that process again, and we have until June 17th to go through that process. But if we want to adopt the budget by June 10th, we really need to do it by the end of May, if we're going to talk about any tax rate changes. But I kept that off of here just until we, you know, because, you know, it hasn't come up yet, so. And the, you can see some of the other notes on here, like, May 15th, we have to let the county know a tentative tax rate, but that can also wait, but I, I tell the county, I can't tell you the official tax rate, because the budget hasn't passed, even though they have a deadline, and say this is tentative until June 10th, so, because they have to plug it in into their systems, because they're the ones that bill and collect the product, the real estate taxes for the towns, and distribute that back to us. June 3rd had on here as additional budget work session, if needed. I'd just like to go ahead and block that out. And on the 10th is the mayor and council work session, where we pass the ordinance and the tax rate, and that's when it's finally done. Speaking of that, do we have, were we going to change a meeting date? Was it the 14th, May 14th we're looking at, because of Mother's Day or something?
So, what we think, we can give a update before?
Yeah.
We can make it on, and we'll send out.
Yeah, so, that's just, just something down the road that we talked about last year, I think, that, you know, we had the meeting after Mother's Day, and everybody was a little bit tired, because, you know, it's like, you know, why are we doing this after a long weekend? So, you know, the mayor and council may want to move that meeting to 14th, in case it's, you know, an issue again, so. But anyway, it's, I just have this up here, and of course, I always say it's tentative, it's up to editing at any time, you know, because this is not a hard and fast, you know, this is just based on today, what the mayor and council can do, and, you know, and if dates change, we'll post them and put them outside, and, and put it out in the port and on our website. Questions?
Great, no, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Vito?
Yeah.
No, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks again.
No problem.
All right, next on our agenda, new business. So, our March legislative session update. LA Perez Consulting will update the town on current bills and issues being reviewed and considered at the state and county levels. And then the council will provide staff with direction on legislation and policy matters.
It looks like that we have Mr. Brown here from LA Consultants. I'll just let him, just try to give him a chance to get up onto the screen.
Okay.
So that we can do that. Mr. Brown, are you there?
I am here. Can anyone hear me?
Yes, thank you. Do you want me to share your, do you want me to share your PowerPoint, or are you okay?
Please and thank you, I would definitely appreciate that.
I got that, no worries.
Yeah. So, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Blatensburg, good evening, esteemed council. Thanks for having me here on behalf of LA Perez, and give you kind of a legislative update of what we've been tracking from a Blatensburg perspective. Some of the bills you're going to see, I'm going to kind of begin in reverse order, some of the bills you're going to see from a state-level perspective, working closely with your great town manager, Michelle, and working, you know, we've got to be in next week with Chief to go through some public safety bills and stuff like that, so we're working closely with, with some of the updates I'm going to give. But I'm going to cover some kind of new updates that I think are very important. Some of these updates, once again, will be with Chief next week to talk through and kind of get a public safety perspective, but I wanted to definitely give you updates with some of the newer updating local council bills that are, that are pretty big. So, CB 005, 2024, this is currently, kind of currently held in committee, but basically, what this bill does is it authorizes, it changes revenue authority, it authorizes the revenue authority parking within Prince George's County to issue tickets for vehicles that aren't parked appropriately, and it opens the door for commercial vehicles to be parked on person, on a personal, on a person's property. So, as of today, the law is written that, if you have a, a great example is a tow truck. If you have a tow truck company, and you want to keep your tow truck on your commercial vehicle on your personal property, you have to hide it out of sight, and you have to put it behind your home, or whatever else. This would allow someone to be able to place a commercial vehicle on a, on a, on a person's personal property. So, I don't know if there's any kind of local ordinances that Blatensburg has, or if that will affect, how that will affect Blatensburg, but that is something that is currently held in committee. So, plenty of time for us to take a look at it and see how it affects you, but that's what CB 005 is aiming to do. CB 015.
Excuse me, Mr. Brown, excuse me, can you just go over that one more time? So, you're saying it's for, just so that we're clear on that bill, again?
Absolutely. So, CB 005, 2024, is currently held in committee.
Council, I mean, Mr. Brown? The slide that you sent to me doesn't have the council bills, they had, it moved straight to the House. I think that's what the councils, there's a disconnect, because you're talking about something that's not on the screen. The council bills are not in here, I just looked through it. Maybe I have an older one, but this is the one I have that has no council, it doesn't have the council bills in it, so that's what the issue is.
Okay. I apologize, I thought I sent an email over. That's my, that's on me, people. There's three bills I would like to cover at a, so I apologize.
There are council bills, these are the rest are these are House bills, so, so, okay. So, that's, so you're not, you're all, you're not missing anything? That's, it's just that the, the, the bills that you're seeing on the screen are the House bills, so.
Yes, that's correct.
He, he has these HBs, and he's doing council bills first, because they're also tracking for Prince George's County, so that, so that, so.
Absolutely.
There, that's, I think that's the issue.
Yeah. Absolutely, I apologize, that's on me. So, 005 addresses, if you will, parking of commercial vehicles on personal property. So, this law, if it passed, was currently held in committee, would allow people to park their commercial vehicles on their actual property, whereas today, you can do that, but you have to hide it outside of, out of sight, behind your home, or whatever else, it can't be seen. This bill were to pass, it would allow you to put your, I use a tow truck as an example, would allow you to put that on your personal property, you know, within sight, while it's on your personal property. So, that is, that is how that bill, any questions about that for the group? I'm sorry if I ran through that really quickly.
Any questions?
Yeah, okay. No questions about that. CB 015, 2024, this is being referred to as the ominous zoning bill. It's a 285-page bill, it's pretty, pretty extensive, pretty thick, covers a number of. Um, CB zero fifteen, twenty twenty-four, this is being referred to as the ominous zoning bill. Um, it's a two hundred and eighty-five page bill. It's pretty, pretty extensive, pretty thick. Um, covers a number of things as it pertains to, um, Prince George's County and zoning, to adding basic definitions for everything, kind of a streamlining, if you will, of how we do, um, uh, activities within Prince George's County. It did go in front of the planning commission, as LDR forty, local design review. Um, a lot with support with amendments, a lot of the, a lot of the negative anti-development that Blatenberg doesn't want to see was kind of stripped out. So we're fairly confident that as it goes toward the county council, as long as nothing is entered in, should be a good bill. Um, but we'll continue to watch that and, and, uh, and give you any kind of updates in regarding to that bill. Um, if there's any questions about that, I'll be more than happy to try to answer or, or get some feedback to you. Um, CB thirteen, zero thirteen, and CB zero fourteen, we kind of lumped them together. Uh, both of those are involving cannabis use. Um, and CB thirteen kind of focuses on, um, if you will, the, 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 the growth of marijuana, like being able to actually grow it and, and the business aspect to it tends to focus on that. Uh, whereas CB zero zero fifteen tends to focus on the use of it, so where you can use it, how you can use it, et cetera. Um, once again, both of these bills, uh, nothing really earth shattering in them. There's a kind of an overall goal to get them, you know, to get the, to get Prince George's County in alignment with the state, to kind of get us in line with how the state looks at, um, municipal marijuana usage and things of that nature. So that's the kind of, uh, overall, uh, perspective on that, on those two bills. Uh, just addressing cannabis-related activities. And then from a perspective of the business aspect to grow and get, where can you grow it? And, and all that other stuff. So that's how those two bills are. Uh, once again, I apologize if it's not in your packet. These were just things that I wanted to definitely get in front of you and make sure to, to let you know if you didn't hear it someplace else, that we're definitely monitoring it on the council level and, and, and we're, um, and we're on top of it from that perspective. Is there any questions on the council, if there's any question on the council bills, please let me know. If not, I can move into the, the state bills.
Any questions from the council? Uh, Mr. Brown, you can go ahead and move on to the state bills. No questions. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Michelle. Um, so a couple of bills there, you'll see. Uh, House Bill, um, eleven oh four. This involves fairness and, uh, the Fairness and Zoning Act. This was a more, uh, by delegate Austin. This was a more concerning act that we had that was, uh, primarily kind of more anti-development from the perspective of it out, it made it very difficult to zone areas multifamily. If they were single family, for example, it adds elements in an area that, um, well, if it wasn't airport, it would always be an airport. So kind of anti-development, not, we were, had anti-development elements to it. Um, that has been kind of held up at the moment. It's not been a whole lot of movement. Uh, there's no hearing on it that's been scheduled, and we're already reaching into March. So for a lot of, for you, for, for, for the city at large, um, most bills, if they're a local bill, they'll go through a first reading, you'll have a hearing, they'll go, it'll go through delegation. This bill kind of hasn't had a hearing or anything. It's just kind of been stuck. So we're keeping an eye on it, but there's been little to no movement on it. And probably a lot of it has to do with kind of what I alluded to, the, the, uh, more sensitive anti-development measures on it. But no movement on that, but definitely something that is concerning, and we'll, we'll keep an eye on it and see how that matriculates. Um, the economic innovation, I know there's something, this House Bill is oh three oh six. That's by delegate Jazz Lewis. I know that's something that the county has definitely been interested in. Uh, specifically the venture capital fund, um, that has moved through delegation. Um, there is overall support for the bill, you know, Jazz Lewis, Chair Whip is, is, is on that bill, overall support of it. Um, I think our theme, like, been in Annapolis this year is funding, funding, funding. So the venture capital funding is a piece that we're, they're trying to work through in terms of how that will work out. So we're definitely keeping an eye on that, but that has, uh, has good legs to it. And, you know, that was a bill that was aimed at tech startups and things of that nature, bringing in a lot of good business to the county. So we'll definitely keep an eye on that and, and see if we can leverage that if we could for, for Blatensburg. Um, House Bill oh three oh seven, uh, this is by Senator Watson. It's more so aimed at Class C beverage licenses, allowing fraternal organizations, not-for-profit organizations to do funding and fundraisers, whereas today in Prince George's County, it's difficult. Um, so that's overall a positive bill that, you know, bring about good economic development and to help our, our fraternal organizations and not-for-profits be able to fundraise. Um, Senate Bill zero one sixty, this is definitely a business-oriented bill with something we've been following as it may impact your business community. So if you think of a lot of restaurants and service-oriented businesses and things of that nature, um, their employees are tipped, so they're not paid minimum wage. So whenever you're an employer, you're filling out your, your, your forms, you're basically counting the percentage of their wages to be tipped. Um, this bill would give about three years for, uh, businesses to be able to bring all their employees up to minimum wage. Um, so that's why we're watching this bill from the perspective of if it does pass, you know, it could have an impact on your, specifically your tipped employee community uh, from that perspective, or your, your business owners that are having to pay those people will have to get in line in terms of, of being that measured. Um, is there any, um, questions from the council about any of these bills?
Any questions from the council? No, not at this time. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Um, guess, uh, moving on, the next one. House Bill, I'm going to combine two, I'm going to combine bills that may make sense. But House Bill three ninety-six and three ninety-eight, been a lot of, uh, a lot of dissension on these bills, some misinformation from, in some perspective. So just want to, uh, kind of get that, uh, line for the council here in terms of what these bills are and what they do. So House Bill three ninety-six and three ninety-eight, what they are is both of them are taxes. One is a tax on energy, three ninety-six. The other one is a tax on the telecommunications tax, your cell phone bill, three ninety-eight, both of which are earmarked funds for education. So that's the number one thing. So a lot of these bills have been floating out there, and people have said, oh, it takes money away from education. You go to bed. No, the, the money is still earmarked, uh, for, for education. Um, when you look at educational funding, you have federal government, which is less than two percent of, of total funding. Um, you have state-level funding, which the Maryland Blueprint Act provides enormous amount of funding. And then the county is obligated to give a certain amount. Uh, Chair Ivy recently reported, that's about four point one billion, about sixty-one percent of the, um, total budget for Prince George's County. What this bill would do is that it would allow, um, the percentage of which Prince George's County obligated to give to the, um, to the school system, um, that certain amount they're allowed to give, it would allow these taxes to count toward it. So these county levy taxes would be allowed to count toward the total amount that they are able to give to education. So if you look at the physical note, overall, it, it could, it potentially predicts the physical note that a reduction in the amount of between five to ten million bucks, uh, could occur fr, from, from education. But it is important to note, when you look at all the additional taxes and what the county gives and the Maryland Blueprint funding, that education is funded at all time, at all time high level. Um, so as you see, you, you'll notice that your, the school board is against it, and there's a couple of other folks against it. And pretty much what, um, um, some of the delegates have on the House have basically made is the county CEO and some other people to get in a room and kind of work this out. So that's kind of where we're at with this, is that at the county level, they're getting together and talking and working this out. But, uh, but overall, um, our kind of recommendation, L.A. Perez, is to kind of let, let the, let the county get together and work this out with the school board and kind of let the, the chips fall where they may, but just giving a clear understanding of what the bills do and don't do. Um, so that's that. Um, Senate Bill zero one hundred.
Mr. Brown, excuse me, one quick question. So, HB three ninety-six, it says leaves an opening for the, it leaves an opening for the county provided school funding to be reduced?
It does, yes. So it leaves the opening from the county from the perspective of, that's a good question. Um, so right now, the county is obligated to give a certain amount of funding toward the school system, uh, when you count in the, the Maryland Board of Education piece, et cetera. Uh, right now, the county level, the county levy taxes, which being the, the three ninety-six, the tax on energy and the telecommunications tax, they're both levied by the county, um, isn't counted toward the total amount, right? It's just not counted toward it. Uh, it's about sixty to ninety million a year, it fluctuates. But that amount of money isn't counted toward the amount the county gives. This bill would say that sixty to ninety million dollars is counted toward the amount the county allocated to give. And so that, that would lead to a smaller dollar amount. For, you know, you could guess, would lead to an overall smaller dollar amount that the county was obligated to give toward education.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought you were saying, that, um, that's really interesting. I mean, they, they need to hash that out, but, um.
Yeah.
Does, definitely, definitely, it definitely, definitely does not need to be any more reductions, but, um, especially in the schools, but, okay, thank you for that.
No, absolutely. I, I think it's, yeah, I think it's a very important bill, and, and I think they need to get in a room, work it out, and that's what we're doing, so. Um, so from the Senate Bill zero one hundred, uh, that's organized retail theft, and I think that's something that Mayor James has been working on and, and things of that nature. Um, organized retail theft looks at stopping, uh, exactly that, which is group-level theft. And, you know, and, and when you're looking at amounts above a thousand dollars. So these people that are working in our county in different areas, coordinating theft and stealing things, it allows a stronger force of mechanisms from law enforcement to be able to communicate with each other and be able to stop this. So overall, a positive bill, moving in the right direction there. Um, HB two eighty-two, I heard the other gentleman talking about, uh, ticket camera enforcement. Um, HB two eighty-two allows for your ticket camera enforcement, as it right now has to be a police officer um, that certifies the ticket. This would allow a trained technician to be able to come out and certify the ticket. So why is that important? Um, we look at the physical note on the document, it's cost savings, so you can, it's cost savings from the perspective of, um, not having a police officer be able to have to go and, and certify the ticket for, uh, for the camera. So overall, that's a positive note in that perspective and, uh, and widely supported, so. Um, yeah, so moving along. So HB zero one seventy, uh, this is the MAGLAF bill. I know, uh, Blatenberg's been leading from the front on this. Um, this has a lot of good traction. It's a, it's a really common sense bill. It's just pretty much says, hey, no more further state-level funding for MAGLAF. And with the, with the exception for the small amount that are designed reviews that have to be reviewed by engineers, things of that nature. So that will continue to ongoing, but no further state le, state-level levy funding for, for MAGLAF. Um, House Bill ten fifty-nine, I know Blatenberg had some interest in this. Um, this bill, on the surface level, um, would enable municipalities to have zoning authority within certain ramifications. Um, there is a population, um, piece to it, which you have to be at least fifteen thousand plus from the last, in the last past U.S. Census. So there is a people portion to it. Um, we have been working hard with Delegate Holmes to, um, to look at, offering some amendments to that, such as flexing the, 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 uh, the population piece of it, and then also flexing on an opt-in, opt-out clause. We think that's important as well. There'll be a lot of folks to either, they want to do it, they don't want to do it, and then flexing on the population piece. Um, to be quite honest, um, this bill is kind of losing some steam for various number of reasons. I know the, the county isn't a huge fan of this, so we'll continue to watch it and look for feedback from Blatenberg in terms of, uh, pursuing this. But it is definitely something that we've been in conversation, um, with as it pertains to delegate homes. And with that, I kind of like to pause. I know this is something that is important to, to Blatenberg. Just want to see if there's any feedback on this, so.
Yeah, thanks for that one. It's, well, Blatenberg, I mean, that population, we're just almost at ten thousand, so. And they have the requirement for municipalities that it's fifteen thousand.
Yeah, and just Councilwoman, from my, my conversation with Jonathan on this is that it only would affect four, um, four municipalities. Um, but the other issue is that the key municipality who actually sent something was, um, a popul, has a population of seventy-five hundred or less. Uh, so one of the, one of the key proponents, so that's the reason why there might be a move from that, to, from that purse, from that particular municipality. Um, I believe it was Forest Heights, or was it, is that Forest Heights or District Heights? District Heights, I'm sorry. District Heights, District Heights is, um, really interested in this, and they are, they have a smaller population than we do. So then, so there may be a pushback to get that changed. Um, but as we've said, we, we'd love to see the opt-in, opt-out clause.
Right.
And we asked for that in our resolution, so that's, that's our level.
Thanks.
Absolutely. We definitely believe that. I think it just makes sense. It should be a choice. Uh, you know, I don't know why it originally went the way that it was, but mandated. But, yeah, I definitely agree it should be a choice, and, um, yeah, I think everybody can get along with that. So we're pushing for that, but we'll, we'll see how it goes, as, as it kind of sputters on. Um, Senate Bill zero one forty-eight is a storm wa, storm water management bill, which is, um, has moved over to the next chamber, which is a positive thing. So it's had all its hearings and it's moving over. Um, storm water manager bill, pretty much earmarked about twenty million dollars. It gives the governor more a couple of years to kind of do it, so it won't be immediate help. But it does, in about three years, twenty million dollars specifically looking at underserved communities and then moving on from there. Storm water management is a, is a huge, uh, problem. So we're definitely, um, watching that bill as it crosses over into the next chamber, and we've got some high hopes for that. Um, Senate Bill zero three one four, this is a good bill. It's a parental accountability bill, and this bill is, uh, by Senator, um, Watson. And, uh, excuse me, Benson, excuse me, Senator Benson, apologize, Senator Benson. Um, this involves, right now, as of today, as, as we all know, and I know Chief and everybody can speak to this, is that we have an issue with, um, juvenile, juveniles, uh, specifically within the criminality perspective. Um, this bill does not address criminality, but it does address civilly. So it leaves the, the parents accountable for the children's actions. So it lists a, um, uh, so you can civilly go after a parent if, if, if the child was to have done something to you or your property. Um, it does assign limitations, civil liberties up to twenty-five thousand. Um, and it does deal with civil manners only. Uh, we have talked with Senator Benson about this bill in terms of, uh, connecting it to, um, criminality and kind of further enhancing it. I think everybody on the call, we, we don't want to see, uh, you know, a, a ninety-four crime bill where our babies are going to, to, to jail, but we definitely wouldn't mind to see some of these parents accountable that are definitely, um, supposed to be involved and help, and make sure that their children are successful. So we have been in talks with them about that. Um, there are some complexities in terms of legal challenges, uh, within the county in terms of holding parents accountable, but they are definitely open to all options to kind of push that forward, uh, from that perspective, so.
Any questions?
All right.
Councilwoman Dixon, I think, I think Councilwoman Dixon has a question.
Hi, how are you? I just want to go, I'm good, thank you. I just want to go back to the House Bill three nine eight, uh, leaving opening for the county-provided school funding to reduce. Um, as we know, the education is the foundation of our community, our future. And, um, this raises a big question regarding, um, our future generation and the impact this will leave on our school and on our community. So I just want to say, um, I think they really need to really take a look back into this bill to do a revamp and just give us a different update on it. Thank you.
No, that's, that's actually, uh, astute point. I, I think, um, for all of us, you know, I have a three-year-old, and I have a senior that actually is graduating from Prince George's County Public School System. So I think any of us with parents who've been up, parents, or whether you have children or whether you've been up in halls, it's hard to imagine any dollars coming out of the school system. So I definitely, um, um, understand that. I think, I think from a political execution perspective, you know, the county knew this was coming, and, um, they probably should have had some additional conversations with the school board, et cetera. So I, I think hopefully some resolutions can come through that to kind of align with that, so. Uh, but definitely, we're always here to represent your viewpoint and your point. So if this is something as a, from a council, that you're going to be humanly against, and you want us to, uh, to, uh, to watch it further, have conversations if you can, I think kind of the, uh, the council from, uh, Tony. I think kind of the, uh, the council from, uh, Tony would be, at this point, would be kind of just to wait and see and kind of let them work it through, but just definitely open for any sort of feedback that, that the chapter I have to find, if that's what you all want to do as a board or how it's going to go, I guess.
Okay, thank you. We have another question from Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Councilmember Dixon, because you raised a good point. When you defund schools, you raise crime in children.
You raise, you raise crime in children? And you can't make the parents accountable if this, if the school, if they don't have the education or the support from the school system, because actually that's where a lot of them get the support, more from the school system. So you can't say making parents accountable when we can't make the school, when we defunding school. Keep that in mind.
Jonathan, may I ask them one quick question about it? Because I, I just want to make a clarification. Jonathan, um,
Yes.
Isn't, isn't this, though, in regards to allocating the entire telecommunications tax to the schools at, instead, because they're currently using a portion of telecommunications that, for tax as part of their general fund? So it's really more of a classification issue? It would then reduce the, it wouldn't reduce the school funding because Kerwin sets that, I think, is some of this issue?
Yes.
Um, so it's not necessarily a defunding. It just reduces, if it's, if it's, if it's dedicated, like let's say their telecommunications tax is dedicated then to the schools, they don't then have to add additional to it. It doesn't necessarily reduce the school's funding because of the way that Kerwin is set up. And I, and I just wanted to kind of, the way that the Kerwin rules are set up for counties, um, so it doesn't necessarily reduce, um, the funding for schools. It's more of the way that the formula would go of how they would allocate it with their own budget. So I just wanted to kind of, it, it is a, it's a very, it's very nuanced and I don't, I wanted to make sure that that's not, that, 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 that comes across because it's not necessarily a reduction. It's, they go, if they do get this in, if the schools, if these pass, then they would be able to say X percentage of this would go directly to the schools and then the county does not have to allocate as much of a portion, but they still have to do a certain amount to schools regardless of that.
So I just want to, yeah. Yeah, it's the wording that's on that slide. I just want to make it, it's the wording.
It's the wording on the slide. I just wanted to, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's why I wanted to make sure that, I didn't want to make the county sound bad because I wanted, because we're partners, we're all partners. So I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's the wording.
I wanted to clarify that just to, just because it's, because it really is a lot of, it is a nuanced, or it's a nuanced issue with the counties and schools and it's the way that they do it. So I just wanted to, to just make sure that that was clear because it wasn't to prove that the counties are trying to reduce funding to schools until they really can. And they're having a lot of difficulty, I think, with that. So I just want to, just want to give you that question.
Thank you.
Don't worry.
Thank you, Michelle. That's, that was definitely, it is, to, uh, Michelle's point, we're, we're given, uh, to our point, the Kerwin kind of sets how much you have to give. And the county's giving more than enough, but they're giving a little beyond that. Right. So that's what this bill is, is attempting to kind of address. The county does have a deficit, so it is looking to, uh, address this deficit as well. So yes, is that, the, the school is being funded at a great rate. This isn't, um, the county coming in and trying to get the school system.
It's just a big issue at CAG. So I've been listening to the CAG communications and I just wanted to say from the county standpoint, I just wanted to represent for my county people, sorry.
Absolutely, absolutely.
No, I said, yeah.
We love our county folks too. Proud Prince George's County. We live, we live here.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And Chair Avi's first letter, she spoke about budgets and numbers and that was the first thing she addressed was, uh, what was going on. So I think that's very, very important.
Well, thank you so very much and, um, we'll look to hear from you during our, our council meeting. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me.
All right. So next on our agenda.
Uh, before John, uh,
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, I was, I had a question for Jonathan, a couple of questions. Is he still on?
Yes, sir. I'm here for you, Chief.
Oh, that's, um,
I'm here, Chief.
Oh, yes, I, I had my hand raised, I didn't know if anybody saw it. But, uh, I just wanted to address a couple of things that, uh, and I want to thank Jonathan, uh, for presenting those, those bills. Uh, I'll say, yeah, back to House Bill, uh, two eighty-two, speed camera. Uh, so we've been tracking that, that bill and trying to get some movement on that as well. Uh, that bill also, just like red light cameras, um, a civilian can, uh, approve a red light camera, but a civilian couldn't approve speed camera. Uh, so there's push on this bill, just for clarification for the, the council, is just the push on this bill is to get a trained technician, um, i.e. a civilian. We, we would train a civilian, um, that will be at a low rate from a police officer and then get our police officers back on the street. So that's the goal of that bill is to get, uh, you know, get our officers on the street because across the board, across the county, across the nation, everyone's experiencing a shortage of, uh, police officers on the street. Um, so that, you know, I just want to thank Jonathan for bringing that up and that is also, uh, going to be part of our meeting when we get together next week, uh, so we can go back and, and talk about these bills a little more in depth. Uh, the second one I wanted to talk about, uh, was the, uh, juvenile, um, the juvenile truancy and, and, uh, the House Bill you just mentioned. Um, I know that from the county level, there's a, uh, County Resolution, uh, zero one, one zero, that has twenty twenty-four. So this is a workshop that's been put in place. Uh, I am also serving on that, uh, county, uh, platform with this to deal with, uh, the truancy, uh, to find if there's a correlation that exists amongst, uh, high school dropouts, juvenile delinquencies and the like. So these are some bills that I'm glad that, uh, Bladensburg is involved in these bills because we have two high schools in Bladensburg. Um, so we need to, in Bladensburg High School, um, having a dropout rate and graduation rate that is far less than some of our counterparts in the county. So I just want to put that out for the mayor and council that I am excited to be working, uh, at the county level, at the state level, and also to be working, uh, down in Indianapolis on some of these bills with Tony, uh, and Mr. Brown. So I just want to put that out there, let you know that there is also a second piece to deal with the, the juvenile, delinquency and truancy, uh, problems that we're experiencing in, especially in this county.
Thank you, Chief. I'm sorry, go ahead. Are you finished?
Yes, I'm, I'm done, thank you.
Okay. And, um, apologies, apologies for that. The PowerPoint presentation was up, so we didn't see your hand raised, but thank you.
That's okay.
Thank you for that, yes. Okay, next on our agenda, new business. I mean, next on our agenda, well, under new business is the review of the council meeting items. So we have Resolution eight dot twenty twenty-four, a resolution providing for a provision, for a Vision Zero policy to eliminate fatalities and serious inju, injuries that are a result of crashes on streets within the incorporated limits of the town of Bladensburg by January one, twenty thirty. State Highway Administration, right-of-way update, uh, information only. So the town has updated its agreement with State Highway to add maintenance areas to our current contract and update the new town signage. Mrs. Bailey Heschpfeffer, did you want to add anything to it?
No, Councilwoman, that's, I mean, I will be able, just to answer any other questions, that's, um, in regards to, um, southbound and northbound, um, uh, on Kennelworth Avenue. These are two exits. And actually, Mr. Mr. Hall is also here. It will, you know, I think that the one, the one issue that Mr. Hall will be able to talk about is, you know, our frequency. I think, I believe the contract says five times per year, but we will be, you know, maintaining it a little bit more than that because we know what the level of trash that has been collected there. Mr. Hall, is there anything else I'm missing here?
No, ma'am, you had everything on the head. I mean,
You had to turn, turn your mic on.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, basically, she hit everything on the head. All we're doing is, as she said, we have, we have an existing MO, MOU with, um, State Highway, which we maintain the peace cross areas, the little lots over there, we, you know, cut the grass and pick up the litter and everything and it's been going on for a while and I think it's, it's a good, is a, is a good task for us as a town because this is like a gateway into the town as well. So, I mean, it, it helps us not only with the neatness and beautification, but we also have the, the staff as now, thanks to the mayor and council. We, we've hired three individuals and today was the last individual, the third individual, he started today. So I think we have, um, enough staff to kind of, you know, kind of, you know, just, um, readjust with a little bit more area. That's all.
Great, great. Congratulations on that. And I will step back on bullet, um, for, for the viewership during the work session. Uh, Mrs. Bailey Heschpfeffer, do you want to talk a little bit about the Resolution eight dot twenty twenty? I know that we're going to read it.
Actually, we have, I actually have two people on the line. I believe the chief is on the line and we actually have Mr. Um, Mr. O'Connor here in person, if you'd like some additional information in regards to this. So I can, Chief, would you like to speak or would you like me and Mr. O'Connor to come up and go to the other, another mic?
Uh, well, I can start and, uh,
Okay. And I'll, and I'll prep the way for John.
And pick up. All right, just so, just, uh, can I go now?
Yes.
Okay. So just for the, the mayor and council and, and, uh, public, uh, benefit, uh, so what Vision Zero is, is a, uh, new federal funding program to help advance the nation's goal in zero, uh, roadway depths. Uh, we know that, uh, we had, um, Ms. Katuma who lost her life in a hit and run. We had a couple pedestrians that, uh, got struck. We had a gentleman that crashed, uh, his vehicle on Route four fifty. Um, so this new, uh, resolution that, that we're asking to be read in and approved tonight will give our grant writer, Mr. John O'Connor, the authority to apply for these grant fundings to help, um, mitigate some of the traffic complaints that we are experiencing in the fatalities on the road, pedestrian, uh, crosswalk enhancement, uh, safety features. So this is a five billion dollar, uh, grant that, that will be dispersed over the next five years, um, allocated to, um, providing, uh, safety on our roadways in our communities. Uh, and that's why we need, we're asking for the council, uh, to pass this resolution tonight, uh, so that, uh, Mr. John O'Connor can act on our behalf and apply for the, uh, part of this five million dollars, um, five billion, uh, not five million, five billion over the next five years.
Thanks, Chief.
So, yeah, so, so Mr. O'Connor can jump in from there.
Sure, thank you, Chief. Uh, Chief did a great job of, uh, summarizing what the, the grant is. Um, the town of Bladensburg will have the ability to apply for up to, uh, ten million dollars of this five billion dollar fund. Uh, it'll cover anything from officer overtime, equipment for law enforcement, pedestrian safety and motor vehicle safety mechanisms, roadway engineering, and anything that you could think of to get pedestrians out of the roadway and push Vision Zero. And what Vision Zero is, it's really a philosophy. What it's saying is, is that the town of Bladensburg is going to participate in a program that is recognized by the state, other municipal governments, nationally and internationally. So you're joining a total philosophy that says, we're not going to tolerate one death or one injury on our roadways and our entire mission by twenty thirty is to drive that down so there is not one fatality, not only in the town of Bladensburg, but in the state of Maryland. So perfect timing on this because fatalities are actually up in the state of Maryland and you're seeing a surge of fatal accidents and they're attributing it to a lot of things. COVID, when nobody was on the road, uh, lawlessness, recklessness. So there's a couple of different aspects here. It's education, it's enforcement and it's infrastructure. So those are the three areas that I'll be targeting, working with staff for this grant, and I hope to maximize every single dollar that's available to the town on this particular grant. Ultimately, when you accept this, you, or approve this resolution, you're approving that philosophy and, and trying to make your road safer, uh, with the police department leading the way with, uh, staff supporting that. And this is a requirement for me to submit. So you have to, you have to approve this in order for me to take the next step for any of the grants.
To take an action with a grant, okay.
That's it.
And, um, and it's, in light of time, it's, uh, six forty-four. Are there any, uh, is, are there any questions from the council? Take maybe one question. Any questions?
Um, how would the town, I'm sorry.
How are you? Thank you for coming. How would the town measure progress toward the Vision Zero target and will there be regular updates provided to the public?
Yes, so part of this resolution is a task force that is assembled, which consists of Public Works, the town administrator, the mayor and council and the police department. The metrics that are tracked through this are through the State Highway Administration and locally. So all the citations that are written by the officers, all of the information that's reported through, uh, the ACRE system, the Automated Crash Reporting System, as well as, uh, any positive results that we see. Everything is reported back to the state and what we're doing is we're actually going to be accepting the, uh, consolidated, uh, transportation plan as well as the, uh, consolidated traffic enforcement plan for the state. So all those, all this data is pushed together from what the police are doing with the task force into all the systems and you get a data-driven result. So believe it or not, you can log in, uh, well, the law enforcement side can log in now to the Raven system and see heat maps based on that data. So it's real time, all the way to the State Highway Administration. So it's not just about the meetings, but, uh, when you have access to those particular systems, you're getting those metrics right away as things are happening. And the Raven system is great because it actually says, this is the hotspot, this is where we need to enforce, based on that data that you're, you're referencing.
Okay. So how does the Resolution eight, uh, twenty twenty-four address, would address the potential challenges or obstacles, uh, while implementing the process?
So what the resolution does is open the door for us to address those. And that creates the task force that allows the chief, his staff and all the team members to sit down and say, what are the problems we are facing? What are the initiatives we need to set? What is the targeted funding that we need for that? And then I take all that data, put it together, and that's how it applies for the grant. Then the task force that is, is assembled, and this is not something that has to meet every week, every month, it's just, you know, maybe biannually you get together, right? You look at everything and you say, okay, are we meeting our goals and expectations for what, what we set? So it's, it's a tiered approach to getting to, getting to the end of twenty thirty.
Thank you for that, Mr. O'Connor. Thank you, um, Councilmember Dixon. As, uh, we are, you know, approaching, how, seven o'clock hour, uh, there we have a couple more, um, items, the mosquito control. So, I mean, so, so thank you very much. Are there any other questions for Mr. O'Connor? Yes, thank you. Appreciate it. So next is our mosquito control program update. The town of Bladensburg participates in this program annually. The spraying program usually starts in late May or early June and continues until early October. So I think, um, we have, um, Mr. Shawn.
Good evening, Mayor. Um, good evening, Council. Yes, the, uh, we're representing the mosquito spray programming in this year. Uh, the beginning date's actually going to be May twenty-sixth and it'll go through September thirtieth. And, um, they will be spraying weekly, um, and they're also
Thank you for that.
I do have a question. Um, hi Shawn, how are you? Can you provide me with some details in regards to the substances used, um, in the mosquito control program, um, to ensure that resident safety, well-being of resident safety?
Thank you, Councilmember Dixon. Any other questions? All right, next, Green Team update. The staff will provide, provide the council with a brief update on a previous meeting and planned Earth Day event on April twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Councilwoman, do you want me? Okay, so Councilwoman, um, Councilwoman McBride and the mayor were at one of our last meetings, but they're both involved in our Green Team. Um, our next meeting is actually next week on March eighteenth and we are planning for the, uh, April twentieth Earth Day at Bladensburg Waterfront Park.
What's the date again? Am I hoggy?
Sure. Um, April twentieth is Earth Day. And then we meet again on March eighteenth, uh, at, um, I think it's at two o'clock and it's always online and we do, um, we do record those meetings.
Thank you. Any questions? Next, COG update, a brief update on the most recent meetings and update from COG provided by the illustrious town administrator.
Yeah, well, thank you. So COG, just to make sure that the Council of Governments is something that we've, that the town has been involved in for several years. We have a series of committees that both staff and the town council have been going to. And I could also provide this report in the main session, but we have been going, I actually attend the CAO meeting every month, and they've been very fruitful, and I'll be able to answer any questions on that. Vito went to the Region Forward, and Councilwoman McBride is also a part of the Agricultural Committee. And then the mayor is going to have another meeting next week in regards to the Environmental Committee. So those are the basics of it.
Okay. Do you have anything to add, Councilwoman?
No, none of this one at all.
Okay. All right. Thank you so very much. Well, we're at that part of the meeting. We would like to thank everyone for coming to our work session. And so I would like to motion to adjourn the meeting.
I so move.
Move by Councilmember Black.
Second.
Second it by Councilmember McBride. Any abstentions or discussions? Hearing none. All in favor? Let it be known by the Senate vote. Eyes have it. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.